Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Fenderbosh. I'm council president and I welcome all of you to the council chambers. Tonight, December the 16th, is a very special night for someone and I think that you're all here for that particular individual. So before we go any further, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mrs. Ross Maron, please call the rule.
Mr. Arnold.
Here.
Mrs. Fenderbosh, Ms. Gentry, Mr. Cos, Mr. Shamir, Mr. Smith, Mr. Zuber, Mayor Spetzl, Law Director Ebert, Public Works Director Liskovitz, and Finance Director Woodman.
Thank you. We do have a coram and we have one item on our legislation tonight and as special meetings, there are no public comments and the public will be able to speak at the next two meetings. First is the appointment of a police officer, Mr. Smith. Ordinance number 24-192. Ms. Ross Maron, please read the by title only.
An ordinance confirming the appointment of Michael Cipro as police officer in the Police Department and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I move for suspension of the rule requiring three readings.
Ms. Ross Maron?
Mrs. Fenderbosh, Ms. Gentry, Mr. Cos, Mr. Shamir, Mr. Smith, Mr. Zuber, Mr. Arnold.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I move for passage of ordinance number 24-192.
In discussion?
Yes, I'll defer to the mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Well, we're here for a oath of office for a new police officer. This is always a great occasion and I appreciate all the people that are here, both current and retired police officers. Welcome, everybody. We're here to give the oath of office to Michael Cipro. Mike is a 2002 graduate of North Olmsted High School. He attended Lorain County Community College, took criminal justice-related coursework during his time there. Mike also worked in loss prevention at the North Olmsted Sears prior to becoming an auxiliary officer and dispatcher for Olmsted Falls. He also worked as a dispatcher for the city of Aleria. Mike was hired by Avon Lake as a police dispatcher in 2010 as a part-time and then became full-time in May 6 of 2013. The skills learned through years of dispatching will assist Mike in becoming a police officer. The communication skills learned, the knowledge of the computer system and paperwork flow at Avon Lake Police Department are some of the more difficult things for new officers to learn. Mike used his advanced computer skills to represent the Avon Lake Police Department on the Lorain County New World Tyler Tech Team, which is a system that was introduced in 2015. He has continued to assist the department with these skills and is currently responsible for submitting all crime stats to the state of Ohio monthly. Mike will be attending the Cleveland Heights Police Academy, which starts on January 6, 2025.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Ross Maron, the rule.
Mrs. Fenderbosh, Ms. Gentry, Mr. Cos, Mr. Shamir, Mr. Smith, Mr. Zuber, Mr. Arnold.
Thank you. It has passed. We're now going to have the swearing-in ceremony. If you could come up to the podium.
All right. If there are any photographers, feel free, stand up, join in, whatever you want to do. You can embarrass them a little bit. If you could raise your right hand or repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Michael Cipro.
The undersigned, the undersigned, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Avon Lake.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Avon Lake.
And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of police officer
Discharge the duties of police officer.
In the Avon Lake Police Department.
In the Avon Lake Police Department.
During my continuance in said position.
During my continuance in said position.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is there somebody who's going to pin the badge?
Very nice.
If you all want any pictures, feel free to come on up and get some pictures with them. Be proud out there. Hello, everybody. Speech! Yeah, it's your turn, right?
I just had my part.
Good?
Yeah.
Very proud to introduce Officer Michael Cipro. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Please.
I move for adjournment.
Some of us.
Mrs. Ross Maron, the roll call.
Mrs. Fenderbosh, Ms. Gentry, Mr. Cos, Mr. Shamir, Mr. Smith, Mr. Zuber, Mr. Arnold.
Special meeting has adjourned. Thank you.
Great. We'll head downstairs and get some more pictures.
Same to you, Jeff. Same to you. Congratulations.
Nobody has had the thing in the center. I just follow the people.
Yeah, no, it's unlocked. It's working.
Oh, thank goodness. Moment, there's going to be a few people that are going to join us from the others out in the hallway in. Okay, at this point in time, we're going to start the collective committee meeting for December the 16th. The very first item on our agenda is Buildings and Utilities Committee with Mrs. Gentry.
Sorry, it's very loud still. So, out of the Building and Utilities Committee, the STAR program that NOPAC has recommended and we've been talking, we've been requesting admittance to their program. The mayor did submit the letter of intent and they have accepted that, so I'm moving out of the collective committee. I move to move that on to the agenda to accept the acceptance into that program.
Right. It doesn't take a motion.
Doesn't take a motion.
But we're one of six communities in Ohio to participate and this is for an assessment. And there's no money out of the city's pocket, so this is actually a 100% grant. Anything else, Ms. Gentry?
The only other topic that we had discussed in our Building and Utilities was the announcement about the county plans for the Regional Sewer District.
And there's nothing on the agenda for next?
Correct.
Okay. For the next meeting. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Gentry? Seeing none, we're going to move on to SERP, known as Communications, Environmental, and Recreational Programming Committee. And Mr. Shamir, you have several items that will be on the next council meeting.
Yes. The first item is Avon Lake Play Space Alps Concrete Contract and I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Liskovitz to give us a little more information.
Thank you, Councilman. So before you, or for discussion this evening, is the results and the recommendation for award for the Phase 1 of the Avon Lake Play Space, which consists, Phase 1 work consists of concrete work for ramps and a pad up at the top of the recently created mound, some retaining seating walls on the north face of the mound, and then additional stationary swings to be installed up top, and then finally the installation of the seasonal or multi-seasonal sledding surface. We had open bids. We had three contractors that submitted bids to us. We opened bids, recorded the information, and then transmitted it over to our consultant at Kimley Horn for the review and recommendation. She reviewed all the bids that were received, made sure all the necessary documents were submitted and completed as required. She reviewed all the quantities that were submitted, mouth calculations that went along with that, and also based on references and comparable projects that were submitted by the contractors that submitted, followed up and verified with those references and to come to the recommendation for RMH as being the recommended contractor to be awarded this project to.
Mr. Shamir, any further discussion?
I've got a couple of questions. Now, the price differential between the two lowest companies, could you tell me how much that price differential is?
I'm just scrolling through it right now. Sorry, did not have that right at my fingertips. So, the difference between the two bidders was approximately about $5,000, which works out based on the bid tabulation that was created about 2% differential.
So 2% differential. I guess my follow-up question would be, is this going to be awarded as a lump sum contract so the price is fixed and there is no change in that price?
So it is going to be awarded on the price that they gave and then we have quantities to verify against. So, you know, as an example, subgrade compaction, we have a quantity in there. If, for example, they use 90% of it, we will only pay for 90% of that and it will be verified as we go. But it will not exceed, without any additional authorization, the awarded amount that is presented for you.
Okay. Thank you. I've got no other questions.
If, in fact, the contract was forward and there is a change in quantities, we require more, we want something additional done, that would have to be authorized by council. A change order.
My question was really pertaining to the values and typically how you bid a price and the potential of the differential being only 2%, it really doesn't have much room for deviation. Thank you.
Any further discussion by council people? My only question is to the Public Works Director, do you have any experience with this particular company?
Yes. I have worked in my previous community with RMH on numerous different concrete projects throughout the city. They were subcontractors in our paving program for concrete work as in their title, their name, that's what they do is concrete. So that'll be the section, the concrete and retaining walls will be their primary stuff and then they have a subcontractor to do the artificial turf installation.
And your experience was successful with them?
Yes.
That's what I needed to hear, was successful. Any further discussion? Okay, moving on. Anything else, Mr. Shamir, from your committee?
Yes. Actually, the next item is the result of the air dispersion modeling as a prelude to the demolition implosion activity. That is going to be presented by Mr. Steve Gross and Mr. Deegan, I would assume. Thank you.
So we're going to check with digital media. Okay, they have it, it's up. Thank you.
This is Steve Gross with Verdantis and my colleague Duncan Bife is here, he's senior engineer with Verdantis. Will be attending, we were going to provide a kind of a summary of the report that we provided, I don't know, a week ago or so, in regards to the Avon Lake plant demolition air dispersion modeling. I do have a few slides that if I could share, that'd be good. I do want to let you know, the audio is a little rough, so if you have problems hearing me or if I have a problem hearing questions, I'll let you know. What I, Duncan, are you, Duncan's traveling, so he's had a few technical difficulties. I was going to see if you're available, I can go ahead and share these.
Go ahead, Sharon. Can you hear, I'm going to keep my video off due to audio quality, but hopefully you can hear me all right.
Yes, we hear you fine. We hear you fine. So I will request to share. Okay, can you see my screen? Okay. Duncan, you just tell me when to go and I will flip slides for you.
Sure. So, basically, the quick summary here is that we did a computational fluid dynamics analysis on how the dust is going to propagate and drop out post-implosion. You can go ahead and go to the next slide, Steve. Number one, in doing that, in getting results that are applicable and good, is to look at the wind. Without a good understanding of the wind, you're not going to know where your particles go. With that, we did a five-year wind study for the Avon Lake location as well as the local construction site. There has a air monitor or wind monitor that's been up for about a year and a little bit, maybe almost two years if memory serves correctly. And the five-year wind data and the local wind data matched up very well. Of course, we did a five-year, that looks at a full five years, 12 months for each of those, and then we narrowed that down to look at exactly what December typically looks like. And what you're seeing on the screen right now is what December typically looks like. Favorable winds for doing this type of work. And you see the Windrose data overlaid. It's not a dead nuts accurate, you know, this is what the wind looks like at the Avon Lake facility. This is overlaid type of work. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. So, one of the key things with looking at dropout of dust out of an air in this type of situation is you have some buildings that are around there that are going to disrupt the wind. One of the things that that creates is this wake region behind the buildings, behind any structures. The team has left themselves a fair amount of structure on the south side of the property, so any wind from the south gets a nice dropout zone behind the structures. And this picture just kind of quickly illustrates that, you know, that yellow area is where we're expecting to see as much a dropout as possible. And in that dropout area, in that wake region, right, we've got really low velocities, we've got flows that are hitting the buildings, hitting the ground, creating a good positive dropout region. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So, here is the south wind. We looked at four wind directions based on that five-year wind history as well as three different wind velocities or speeds rather to go with each one of those winds. So this is looking at the south wind and you can see overlaid on the graphics here on the map where you see a green dot, this is approximately where, and you know, we're talking approximate, this is a reference case providing confirmation that particles, dust particles, implosion dust, all those things are going to go ahead and try to be contained as best as possible on the site. And what you'll notice is that south wind obviously pushes it more north. And we'll see each one of the four wind directions here. And at the end of the day, we compare back to what the team is expecting based on their past history of implosions at Avon Lake. And you'll see these data, they go over pretty well, they match very well. So what you will also see is that there are small particles and those small particles, they fly. If they get up into the wind out of that wake region there, they will fly, they will go beyond the local sightlines, they will also continue on well past until they run into a wind shear that drops the local velocity down to a level that they'll fall out. But just for reference and sizing, we looked at 10 micron and 5 micron particles. And it's kind of amazing when you actually see how much a particle will float in air. Just for reference, kind of that 1 micron to 5 micron particle, when you put that released in a room, and this was all the problem with COVID, you put that particle in a room and that particle stays airborne even though there's not really a driver in the room to push the air around it. They're wicked small is what it boils down to. So these really small particles, you know, some will drop out due to being in that wake region and then some will continue on. You can go to the next slide. That was the south wind, this is the southwest wind. And this compares, you'll notice there's a green box around the far right one here. This compares very well to what the goals are based on the risk mitigation report from Gary Deegan and his team. And I'll overlay those two together in a couple of slides and you'll see. But this south-southwest wind is favorable in that it's heading, you know, not going to have particles falling out outside the site onto buildings or any such thing like that. There is obviously stuff that's going beyond the sightline. In this particular case, with this wind direction, it's falling in the water predominantly. Then go on to the next one, Steve. Southwest wind just bumps that wind a little bit more from a directional standpoint, very similar to the south-southwest is what we see here. And you can go to the west one now. And the west wind would be, you know, clearly the, one of the least ideal winds to do. From a speed standpoint, the wind direction will, you could almost rotate the particles we see on the map, not quite because that wake region changes based on the wind direction as well, of course. This west direction has a very small wake region, frankly. The buildings are kind of parallel to the wind flow and it doesn't impact the wind nearly as much. More particles go up into the wind and continue on. You can go to the next one. And so here, we overlay the CFD data with the implosion team's data. And what we see is, you know, really good agreement. The data from the implosion team is experiential. The data from the CFD is developed based on available practices, of which honestly, there are not many. We found some data in non-peer-reviewed journals. We found some data based on what we know of how particles fly. Verdantis as a whole has been doing dust entranement, dust modeling for many, many years. We've been around beyond Verdantis since the, before 1900. So we've been around for quite a while doing this flow analysis thing. And we've been doing dust specialty work for the power industry since the 1970s or so is when, when the previous company started doing this type of analysis, or dust analysis, rather. This idea of modeling implosion and modeling demolition sites is very new. It is not a well-established practice. So what you're getting here is a CFD analysis that's put together by experienced CFD engineers with good numerical skill as well as the engineering background to be able to interpolate that data and represent it in a physical fashion to represent more or less what you're going to see. And when you compare what the demolition team has and compare that to what we did, we get there. I would tell you that what the demolition team is prepared is good and it's a good safety risk. They're taking all the mitigation features that they can to be as clean and safe as possible. run into a wind shear that drops the local velocity down to a level that they'll fall out. But just for reference and sizing, we looked at ten micron and five micron particles. And it's kind of amazing when you actually see how much a particle will will float in air. Just for reference, kind of that one micron to five micron particle. When you put that released in a room, and this was all the problem with COVID, you put that particle in a room and that particle stays airborne even though there's not really a driver in the room to to push the air around. They're wicked small is what it boils down to. So these really small particles, you know, some will drop out due to being in that wake region. And then some will continue on. You can go to the next slide. That was the south wind, this is the southwest wind. And this compares, you'll notice there's a green box around the far right one here. This compares very well to what the goals are based on the risk mitigation report from Gary Deegan and his team. And I'll overlay those two together in a in a couple of slides and you'll see. But this south-southwest wind is favorable in that it's heading, you know, not going to have particles falling out outside the the site onto buildings or any such thing like that. There is obviously stuff that's going beyond the sightline. In this particular case with this wind direction, it's falling in the water predominantly. Then go on to the next one, Steve. Southwest wind just bumps that wind a little bit more from a directional standpoint. Very similar to the south-southwest is what we see here. And you can go to the west one now. And the west wind would be, you know, clearly the the one of the least ideal winds to do. From a from a speed standpoint, the wind direction will, you could almost rotate the particles we see on the map. Not quite because that wake region changes based on the wind direction as well, of course. This west direction has a very small wake region, frankly. The buildings are are kind of parallel to the wind flow and it it doesn't impact the wind nearly as much. More particles go up into the wind and continue on. You can go to the next one. And so here we overlay the CFD data with the implosion team's data. And what we see is, you know, really good agreement. The the data from the implosion team is experiential. The data from the CFD is developed based on available practices of which honestly, there are not many. We found some data in non-peer reviewed journals. We found some data based on what we know of how particles fly. Verdantis as a whole has been doing dust entranement, dust modeling for many, many years. We've been around beyond Verdantis since the before nineteen hundred. So we've been around for quite a while doing this flow analysis thing. And we've been doing dust specialty work for the power industry since the nineteen seventies or so is when when the previous company started doing this type of analysis or dust analysis, rather. This idea of modeling implosion and modeling demolition sites is very new. It is not a well-established practice. So what you're getting here is a CFD analysis that's put together by experienced CFD engineers with good numerical skill as well as the engineering background to be able to interpolate that data and represent it in a physical fashion to represent more or less what you're going to see. And when you compare what the demolition team has and compare that to what we did, we get there. I would tell you that what the demolition team is prepared is is good and it's a good safety risk. They're taking all the mitigation features that they can to be as clean and safe as possible from a from a risk standpoint. And the CFD modeling agrees with that very well. So that's that's the summary. Happy to answer or attempt to answer any questions I can. My audio is terrible, but Steve can certainly text me if if there's a bigger question.
Well, I want to add to that as well, if I can. I'm gonna stop sharing here. But so the purpose of this really was to get an idea of where we would do additional monitoring. Gary Deegan's group for the property owner has put together a sampling plan within the limits of the property itself that is fairly robust. What the city has asked us to do is take a further look at that into the neighborhoods, surrounding areas. We're looking at sensitive areas, we're looking at areas that we would place monitors, additional monitors, I think a total of six monitors is what we have planned. We're working very closely with the city now to locate those. We'll begin mobilization tomorrow on setting up the locations of those monitors so that we can get some background information as well as information during the implosion and then additional data, integrated data, particle size, chemistry, metals and and asbestos and poly nuclear aromatic hydrocarbons are the analyses that we're going to do. And we'll take it pre-implosion, during implosion and post-implosion so that we have a good gradient of data. So that's really the purpose of this. And like I said, we'll be mobilizing tomorrow in preparation of the activities that that will here come soon.
Thank you, Steve. If if I may, first of all, I'd like to thank Verdantis, Todd Davis, ALERG, Deegan and Associates who are cooperating cooperating in in getting this documentation done. I've got comments and as well as a question. If I may, the comment, you guys came up with a recommendation on wind directions. Can you tell us a little more about the implosion and the wind direction recommendations that you came up with?
Yes, on the recommendations, basically, we we indicated that you know, recommended the six locations, six additional locations for monitoring outside the property area. We'll be looking to the west, to the south and predominantly to the east. Our recommendation would be then as far as the implosion, really, it's not our call, but the model indicates that the best situation is wind directions from the south-southwest.
Implosion when the winds are from south-southwest?
That would be ideal, yes.
The next question that I've got is, as we discussed previously, you you guys will Verdantis will have one location for monitoring that will be a witness along with ALERG or Deegan Associates. Is that what the final decision is?
We can do that. Originally, when we discussed that, we tried to order a seventh monitoring location. As Mr. Deegan can tell you, these are not easy to get. They're very expensive pieces of equipment. We were able to secure in such short time, we were able to secure six units. Our goal was to place six units within the area surrounding the site. If we were to go ahead and partner or ameer one of Gary Deegan's units, that would take away from one out in the community. The value of that I question because the data is the data. They're using very similar equipment. So I don't, I mean, we certainly can do that. We would just be taking additional one out of the community and putting it, you know, next to the fence across from where Mr. Deegan would place one. And and Mr. Deegan and I have discussed that as well. He's completely open with it. He would give us direction on, you know, which ones we could access. I'm just questioning the value of that, given the data and the comparison of data that we looked at from the first implosion back in July.
Thank you. The next question would be for Mr. Deegan and it's if if he if Mr. Deegan can give us a some information on the engineering controls using polymers to suppress the dust. During the implosion, if he can give us a rundown with respect to that, I would greatly appreciate it.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Within our risk assessment document, we had outlined a number of engineering controls that the demolition team and ALERG have been very busy getting into place and are in place as of this week. Those include not only the strategic placement of high-water mist dust cannons like we used on July thirty first. And frankly, those dust cannons and their strategic placement based on the morning's wind were highly effective in knocking down that dust plume and keeping it on the site on July thirty first. We expect the same approach this time as well. When you're on the site and moving through those, you almost have to have your wipers on high. It simulates such a strong rain event. And I I have that experience from July thirty first when we tried to move ourselves around the site and get off the site right before the implosion. So that's the experience that we have. We've taken that a bit further and we've created a trough, so to speak, so that the demolition implosion materials that a result from the implosion will fall into a depressed area on the site. That depressed area on the site is represented by the turbine wall on the south side, which is about eighty-five feet high. The admin building is still present, so that's about ninety feet high. And one of the things that Duncan was describing to you is how you get that wake region as a result of those buildings and walls still being in place and they were purposely left there for that for that reason. We're not going to stop with those controls. We're also going to prepare and have prepared the ground surface by number one, placing clean fill over the drop zone. Clean clay soil that we tested and it meets MAP standards, but we're going to sacrifice that that soil because we know we're going to drop the stacks as well as some of the components of the buildings onto that soil. So even though it's clean, we wanted to know it was clean before we dropped on it so that that soil itself doesn't create dust that may have something in it that could travel off the property or to a receptor. Next, we're going to place a geotextile on top of that soil. Geotextile fabric will act as a blanket. It will also become sacrificed by the implosion and the drops that occur onto it. But it will also help stabilize that soil and stabilize that surface. We're going to supersaturate that soil surface and that geotextile with not only water from the water cannons, but with water trucks that have been placed onto the site and we'll run that site the day before, the morning of. And then certainly after the implosion when the safe clear is all given. In addition to that, we, in the demolition industry, there's a polymer material that's often referred to as a product named Gorilla Snot. And it's simply a material that helps to tackify or to make that surface sticky, saturated. And has a repulsion to dust movement. It's a measure that we've taken and we've purchased that and we've placed that the day before as well as the early morning of. So those are so those are the key engineering controls that we have in place for this implosion. And they're a bit more bolstered than they were the first implosion, but nevertheless, they're proven and we're confident in them.
Thank you.
Answers your question.
Yes, that did. Thank you.
We have representatives from ALERG here also. If Consul has any further clarification they would like to have, perhaps they could have someone speak if the need should come up. Consul, any further discussion? I have a question, Mr. Gross and Mr. Deegan. The recommendation also from Verdantis, it was a recommendation for the wind speed should be less than twelve miles per hour. And is that something that that I know you showed it in your in your examples. Is that, I'm going to ask ALERG also to come. Is that something that that you're able to try to comply with?
Well, we're certainly taking all these recommendations under advisement. We have a an important balance of time of day is certainly a factor that we're going to consider and that that helps our wind direction. But I think one of the the key messages that Stephen and Duncan portrayed in their model is that, you know, wind speeds that are slightly higher create the turbulence in that wake that actually drops the particles to the ground faster than the lower wind speeds. And if if you want to put that graphic back up just to show that illustration, I think that's good news for everybody. You would think the opposite, but in fact, because of that wind turbulence, it tends to drop that dust, certainly the bigger particles of dust to the ground faster than if you have a slow wind. And that's interesting, but nevertheless, we're going to balance all this information the morning of and make a very key decision to proceed or in some cases not to proceed. But I think the safety factor of having the explosives in place and having to maintain them in that position for any extended period of time is also a risk that we we have to consider very importantly as well.
Yeah, I I may, may I add to that as well?
Please.
So these wind speeds, these are averages with averaged wind speeds that we looked at. That's where these came from. And in July, if I'm not, if I'm correct, is that the wind speeds were around four to five. And so that was, you know, an ideal situation. However, Mr. Deegan's correct, with higher wind speeds, we saw more of the particles fall out on the site because it creates that turbulence. It's almost a down thrust of that of those, the heavier particles contained within the site. So that's what this is showing. And also I wanted to mention that we work very closely with Deegan to get the parameters of their best management practices and their engineering controls so that we could adopt those within our models where practical.
Have is does weather as far as precipitation affect this particular implosion?
My understanding from our experts on the team is that precipitation will not be a factor. It's actually preferred as a condition if we can have precipitation that day. Since we're in the winter months, we don't expect lightning events or lightning incidents. That would be a a negative effect and certainly some we would have to delay or postpone if there was lightning, but we don't typically see that in the winter months.
Thank you. I want to ask ALRG to come forward and I just want to thank all parties. The city, the city's consultants, ALRG and your consultants for working together. And not only having a risk assessment, but also having this air dispersion modeling that will help to keep our residents, our community safe. And I think that you have some things that you wanted to address.
Yeah, just wanted to, my name is Scott Reshley. I'm with ALRG and I thank you all for the opportunity to be here tonight. And also thank you for the opportunity to obviously work with Steve Gross and Verdantis along with our Gary Deegan and associates, our consultants. And wanted to answer a couple of other points that you've just raised, Council President. And that would be more around the same things that that Gary and Steve touched on. Biggest day of things that we're concerned about would be lightning, which we don't expect, but that would be the biggest one that we would, that would be, would be one of those no-go kind of decisions. Another one would be large wind gusts. And so large wind gusts, not necessarily the ones that that Steve ran out in their modeling, but large wind gusts in the twenties and thirty miles an hour, depending on the direction, could be something that we would ultimately decide a no-go decision as well. And then also anytime we're looking at it, whether it's, I know we've communicated, we think it's going to be sometime between the seventeenth to the twentieth. And we're always looking at what is it going to be better the next day when we make that decision? Is one day ten miles an hour and the next day is looking like it's going to be eight or is it going to be fifteen? You know, is it is the risk worth the reward on on that kind of decision? If we decide to delay things. But first and foremost is the safety of the community as well as our workforce and and the environment, so.
Thank you. And do you want to expand on that? And after the implosion, just remind the residents, because there's a lot of people watching on the live streaming. Just remind them what will take place right after the implosion before Lake Road is reopened.
Right after the implosion, we'll have, obviously, we'll have our crews, our subcontractors' crews. We've got other risk remediation crews that are going to be on standby in the event we need to do that day of cleanup and other kind of removing any kind of dust and things like that from the street if need be. We don't expect to have to, but we've got a lot of people to be able to be on standby and they're going to be there the day of the explosion so that we're prepared to respond accordingly.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, who in the city, if it's you, that's great, if somebody else, that's wonderful, whatever, who's going to be the individual that's going to say it's time to open the street? It's it's safe now.
Well, that's going to depend upon the professionals on scene in cooperation with our fire department and police department to make that determination.
Thank you, because I I know the residents are wondering, they've been asking a lot of questions of Consul. Anybody else have a question? Yes, Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I just wonder what what weather forecast services do you use in making your determination?
We've used
Come on up to the podium if you would, so we can pick up your voice.
We have used several.
Introduce yourself.
Wayne Woodruff, I'm project manager. We've used several, sir, and there's a bit of a variance in each one of them. But right now, what we're seeing is winds generally out of the south-southwest or west-southwest with one even calling for a bit east of south. So right now it looks very favorable. Twelve to fifteen, all of that's perfect for what we're wanting to do. Chance of precipitation, again, perfect.
But some of the service providers, whether it's
AccuWeather.
AccuWeather.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Weather underground, weather underground, Accu, AccuWeather, wind, windy is another one. So it it's just been a variance, but right now I haven't, I've only seen one that predicted from the north.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cross?
Yeah, thank you. My question is for Mr. Shamir. Mr. Shamir, you've been asking for this type of air dispersion modeling for a while, so I'm glad that we could finally get it. Are you okay with the process on how this was conducted? What are your kind of wrap-up thoughts on? You know, the dispersion modeling has been done or it's still continuing, the additional locations as well to still need to be done, but is this what you've been talking about or are you satisfied with with how this was conducted? This particular air dispersion modeling?
The answer would be yes, I am satisfied. The process is is effectively what is required. We've gone through, we've looked at what the potential scenarios of wind direction and speed will generate and based on that, there's an understanding of where and how the wind speed, the optimal wind speed and wind direction would be for this. And based on the results also the monitoring stations. So I think as a risk mitigation measure, this is what was required and and what has been done, I think, is it covers those bases.
And thank you for continuing to push for it. Glad we can get it done.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Smith?
Yes, I I did want to thank Mr. Shamir too for his hard and dedicated efforts toward this. To see to it that this was done for the safety of the residents and I wish them all good luck in their endeavor coming up here in the next week or so. Thank you.
Thank you. We all come from various backgrounds and this is an example of where one of our own is especially in the area and helped us and helped all of you really to pull this together. Thank you for working together, Mr. Shamir. And as I said again, ALRG and Deegan along with Steve Gross and Verdantis. And this will be a success. We're going to keep moving forward. Thank you.
We thank you also.
Okay, we're going to move on then to finance committee. Mr., oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Just have one follow-up question. When will these results be available?
The question, Gary and Steve, I think it's more for you as far as results. When would the results be available?
This is Gary. Uh, some of the dust monitoring is real-time, meaning it's available immediately afterwards. And the professionals need to QA and QC that data, but we will be looking at it soon afterwards in terms of dust levels that we experienced at the stations. We also submit the cassettes and the filters into a laboratory. And our laboratory has promised about a forty-eight hour turnaround on those results, so it would just be a couple of days afterwards. We'll, we'll know quantitatively what, what is measured at this, the air monitoring stations that Deegan is managing.
And I think that timeframe was fairly similar to when we provided results after July thirty-first.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, Mr. Arlo. Yes, Mr. Shamir?
Just for sake of clarity, because I know that there is discussion in the community. You guys will be monitoring the movement via seismographs as a part of your activity. And, and I, I know that there's discussion that they're worried about no seismic monitoring, but that typically is your part of risk reduction and your process.
Yes, sir. We have that included.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have further questions from council? Okay, yes, Ms. Gentry.
This is a question for council. I'm not sure how we can provide that information to the public as well. Where would we put that information?
That's actually administrative. Go ahead.
So once we get the information from both Verdantis and ALRG, uh, we'll compile it and get it out on the website. And we'll get it to council as well.
Thank you. We always like follow-up, right? Okay, very good. Now, Mr. Zubor, we're going to move on to the finance committee. You have some items?
The first item that we have is a supplemental appropriation. Uh, that is at your seat. We had talked about this, I think for the last two finance committee meetings, that there would be an additional supplemental that would be coming, uh, to put everything together by the end of the year. That's all I have on that.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Zubor? Mr. Widman is here also. If you have any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Zubor. Can you move on to the next one?
The next one is a temporary budget. That's on for second reading and for passage. Uh, that'll be, take us uh, through the first few months of the calendar year twenty-five. It's, I think I'm going to be sitting down with the administration and the new finance director to see how fast we may be able to move forward.
Right, and you're also going to be receiving new information from the county in January. Very good. Any questions about the temporary budget for twenty-twenty-five that's on the next meeting agenda? Okay, we're going to move on to human resources committee. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Uh, on the agenda first is listed the finance director appointment. Uh, this is the mayor's appointment. I'll, I'll let him take it over.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. So we have, uh, went through a process to choose a new, uh, finance director. Um, we're happy to introduce, and I believe this was at the last meeting as well, I was unable to attend. Beth Crossy, um, will be our, uh, nomination for the finance director. Beth comes to us from Oberlin, where she was, uh, with them as an assistant and a finance director since two thousand and seven. She has a Bachelor of Arts from Business Administration from Bowden Wallace. And uh, she also is a certified public accountant. She also has, uh, additional private sides, um, finance, uh, work as well. And uh, we are happy to have her on board and we're looking forward to it. Uh, our, um, maybe Lynn could speak a little bit more to some of the due diligence that we did with Beth as far as the backgrounds and so forth.
Sure.
Lynn, come on in.
Thank you. Um, as you know, it's been a process to find this.
Introduce yourself to the public, please.
Sorry, Lynn Kurnia, um, HR Director for the city.
Thank you.
It's been a process to, uh, find the, this candidate, uh, the right candidate for this role. We've been through a number of interviews and I don't have my list in front of me, uh, but I think it was in the twenties. We did phone screening, uh, and then first round interviews, second round in person, third round in person. The mayor and I met with, uh, several of the candidates who we thought were qualified and, uh, it was appropriate to, um, interview them further. We did have two candidates who we really liked from other finance directors in other cities. And unfortunately, both of those two, uh, decided that the commute for them from various locations of the state was too far from home. So we were unable to move forward with those candidates and thankfully found someone who was a little closer to the city. Uh, Ms. Crossy lives in Avon, so she will not be far from our city. Um, and is moving, of course, a little closer to work than Oberlin. Uh, we've also done a number of background checks to make sure that her credentials are verifiable. We spoke with her references. We spoke with her previous supervisors, all of whom had nothing but great things to say about, uh, Beth's work ethic, her knowledge and her, um, skill and background. So we're confident that Ms. Crossy is the right person for this position.
Thank you for sharing. Any questions from council? Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, you have another item?
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Avon Lake Firefighters Local thirteen sixty-one contract ratification. Uh, again, I'll turn this over to the administration to discuss what they want to at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I'm going to bring Lynn back up for that one as well.
Contract, uh, the contract has been ratified for IAFF Local thirteen sixty-one. We are looking for council's approval of that ratification, uh, this evening, uh, in the next meeting. We went through a very extensive process with FIRE, um, to come to agreements on many of the issues that we wanted to resolve and some that they wanted to resolve. Some things are, of course, of, um, zero-dollar financial value, but important to, uh, the members of the FIRE union. Uh, they wanted to increase their sick time buyback from a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty hours. That doesn't cost the city any direct, uh, upfront cost, but it's important to, uh, the FIRE members. They wanted to be able to cash out more vacation upfront, so maybe a direct cost at that time of cash out, but certainly not, uh, a more, um, financial burden to the city. We had a number of contract items to clean up from previous contracts and we think we took care of all those things. Uh, the FIRE department was interested in forty-hour work weeks when training seminars occurred. Otherwise, they're working twenty-four on, twenty-four off with some variables. Uh, so we allowed tw- forty-hour work weeks, Monday through Friday, for when training seminars can occur so that they can have a weekend before and after, um, offer training. We defined the terms of immediate family for time off purposes such as paternity, excuse me, paternity leave. And of course, they were interested in wage increases, so we had discussions around those, what the costs would be for the city and how we could best, um, cost contain while also offering a certain wage increase.
Thank you. Any questions among council members? Yes, Mr. Zubor?
What are the raises per year for the next three years?
Three percent each year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Might want to stay here. Mr. Smith, your next item?
Thank you. Um, there are several, uh, union contracts that have not been finalized yet and we'll have, uh, legislation on those extending to February twenty-eighth, the time in which to try and finalize those contracts, uh, at the next meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith, your next item?
Thank you. Uh, engineering consulting services with Bramhall Engineering. Uh, the rates of pay for the various members of their firm are listed in exhibit, I don't remember if it's A or one, uh, that are attached to the contract, um, which is a renewal of the contract. This contract basically for Chris Howard. And that's on the agenda as well.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Smith? Yes, Mr. Shamir?
Question I've got on this, uh, contract. This is a one-year contract for engineering. I would assume city engineer services. And, uh, when did this come up? I thought that, I mean, we would have a strategy with respect to hiring an engineering manager and having engineers around, uh, services, but this again is a, is a year contract. And do we have a projected cost associated with this one-year contract? Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
I'll defer to the mayor on that one.
Mr. Mayor?
So like, this is basically a renewal of the prior year contract. The rates of the agreement have stayed the same. Beth has done not to increase those. This contract can be terminated and I will look in here. It's a very short term termination. I'm sorry? Forty-five. Forty-five days? So we can terminate within forty-five days, either party. So until we get a full-time engineer, uh, e- well, let me go back. Even if we had a full-time engineer, there's always going to be a need for contractual engineer services. Uh, but they're really filling the role currently of a full-time engineer within the city which we're working on. Obviously, we've had other holes to fill. We've concentrated on those. Moving into twenty-five, uh, we've already had conversations and we're doing a little work on what that engineer is going to look like, where they're going to reside. We have budgeted for that for the next year. Uh, so any offset, if we hire an engineer, obviously we'll, we'll terminate this contract. Uh, we would still maybe possibly utilize their services or other contractual engineer services, but, uh, there would be an offset if we were to hire somebody. I can't give you a definite timetable on that. Hiring a municipal engineer, I know is a challenging proposition because, uh, private side generally pays a little bit more than the city side pays, but we want to make sure we get one that is well-versed in the types of activities that we're involved with.
Mr. Shamir?
Follow-up. So as the engineering service comes in for municipal engineer, I would assume that they would oversee the inspection services that are in the field as well. And I find that as a conflict of interest since Bramhall is providing both the engineer and the inspectors. That's the, that's a concern I've, I've raised before. Thank you.
So I can address that maybe and John can help me address this. So we have hired two engineer techs, an engineer tech one and engineer tech two. Uh, they're going to be taking over many of those inspections that were previously done by Bramhall because we did not have in-house. There could be services, I'll let John speak to this more, where we have contractual inspectors that they would oversee. But John, if, if you could elaborate on that for us?
Sure. Um, so essentially as the mayor said, as we start transitioning our new staff and there's going to be a little bit of an overlap, um, but the ultimate goal is to start doing, you know, the inspection stuff that we can do internally. Um, there are going to be some projects where we're going to need a consulting firm. Um, and it'll be, uh, whoever is qualified at that time, um, such as the upcoming, uh, US six sidewalk projects that we endeavoring. We'll go out for qualifications for an inspection firm to run that. So it's not going to be a, a guarantee that, you know, Bramhall Engineering would be getting that inspection work there. But to your point, trying to, to manage through that and get to a point where, where we're eliminating those potential conflicts.
And if I could, um, my experience, Mr. Shamir, is that a true conflict comes in if the contractor was represented by Bramhall. But by Bramhall setting the standards to go out for bid and then inspecting to make sure that what is being done meets those, uh, standards is typically what's done in the architectural field, because I used to do it for architects. When the conflict is, is there is if the, um, bid awarding company also is working with Bramhall. That's when there's a real conflict there. Yes, sir?
Madam President, the conflict that I'm discussing is a function of the consulting municipal engineer sending out inspectors that are employed by the same firm for durations beyond what are required. So that is, that is something that is not typically done. It doesn't make a difference where you are. You will not allow the same firm sending out its own inspectors on behalf of the city where you don't have a control on how much, how many hours they will be charging and the engineer would have. That's the, that's the discussion.
It's, it's a control, is what you're.
Exactly.
Exactly. Um, Mr. Lyskavec, you, under your department, has the control of when Sam, Joe, Jim, Janet, Jennifer, or whatever are out there inspecting?
Correct.
And whenever it is a third party, they still have to respond to you?
So, uh, case in point this year with our, our, um, street programs. Um, so there's direct communication, um, with the contractor because they're, they're dictating when they're going to be on site. So they need to communicate, um, you know, we're going to be out here X day and this is how long we're going to be out here. So that, that kind of controls a little bit, um, of that engineer or the inspector out on site. Um, I think to maybe your, your point as, you know, well, an engineer is out, an inspector is out for ten hours and the contractor was only out there for six. Um, the, the, the inspector will follow the, the time that's out in the field. Um, and that's usually directly coordinated, um, between the inspector and the contractor for scheduling purposes, that, just to eliminate the middleman and, and potential for, uh, a lapse uh, in communication between the two. But again, all things to be, that we'll be working on now that we're going to have some internal staff to, to be able to throw at some of this stuff.
Mr. Shamir, go ahead.
I would say that it would require a lot more coordination and I think one of the things that we need a lot more of in the city is, is coordination and planning. And that is something that, that we're talking about. Having that, I wouldn't worry, but it would require more additional staff to oversee and, and manage. But the question that I started with, what was the contract value last year for Bramhall for the same services? Was it a hundred thousand? Was it two hundred thousand? Was it fifty thousand for the year? So that is the question that I've got. And, uh, do we have that number?
Um, I, I have some preliminary data. I have not compiled it all yet on, on everything that we've put together, but that's, I think I referenced it last time that we're working on pulling that together. It'll be utilized uh, as we start working on our planning and stuff like that.
Let me, uh, is, are we talking about over a half a million dollars worth of work? I mean, there, there should be some ballpark.
No, I, I, to, just off the top of my head, not over, not, didn't exceed a half a million dollars.
Can you get that information?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Smith?
Yes, on that topic, I think it's very important as we, uh, strive to get an engineer that we absolutely make sure there's no conflicts of interest between Bramhall and our department. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Smith, you have another topic?
Yes, I have a couple more. Uh, where we have a motion to, uh, thank Mr. Widman for his services, uh, and conclude them as of January fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-five on the agenda. Then I have a couple other items after that, if there's questions on that.
Okay, so then go ahead, Mr. Smith?
Uh, also on the agenda is the pay range for the, uh, assistant finance director position that we've been talking about, uh, for a while.
Any comments, council? Okay, yes, we do have, do we have one? All right, is your hand out?
Yes, and I see that I have a couple motions. Are you planning on handling those toward the end of the agenda?
Go ahead.
Okay, I have a couple other motions, uh, to reappoint Scott Ora, Ora to the, uh, planning.
Oh, this isn't under the human resource.
No, that's why I asked you, I thought.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Are you going to handle those?
Yeah, I'll be handling this, yeah, thank you.
Uh, but I noticed that I was doing the motion, so thank you.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, moving along to public service committee. Uh, we have three items that are going to be coming up next time, uh, at the next meeting. The first one is the twenty-twenty-five landfill contract with HZW Environmental Consultants. And you all have a copy of it. Um, it's very close to what it was before. Mr. Lyskavec, is there anything that you want to add to this discussion? They're going to be looking for the methane gas and water flow?
Uh, yeah, yes, correct. Um, so again, following in our, our post-closure of the site, looking at, obviously, um, meeting the, the requirements set out by Ohio EPA for, for the post-closure. And so HZW will be, um, performing the, you know, or, uh, upon approval, performing the services, uh, that they've performed, um, in, in previous years to facilitate those post-closure activities. Uh, additionally, we'll be looking at some other, uh, I would say more so internally, but, uh, processes and, and plans for, um, the future years coming up and where, where this is all going to end up, uh, hopefully sooner than later.
Thank you. Um, any further discussion from members of council? Yes, sir, Mr. Shamir?
I guess, uh, I'll address this to Mr. Lyskavec. They've been doing this work for twenty-five years, correct?
That sounds approximately correct.
So there is a mention in the proposals that. So there is a mention in the proposals that the city, along with HZW, has developed a scope of work. What was in the scope of work that was given to them, if you don't mind me asking? Because when I look at it, I can't see anything written to the scope.
So essentially, for this, it was a repeat of the scope from last year. And then they, I know that they had trimmed some of it back a little bit because our contract value last year was higher than it is for the proposed.
Well, if I may continue.
Absolutely.
It says on the additional activities, as well as ongoing activities, which may need to be performed in 2024, 2025. It says, "Respond to Ohio EPA comments concerning the post-closure completion certification report." We still have not seen those comments from Ohio EPA. So what exactly are they addressing? That would be something to look at. Says, "Assist the city of Avon Lake with annual notification during December of 2024." So that is reporting for 2024?
That, actually, that is required notifications to surrounding properties. So they've actually prepared the letters that will be actually going out to those properties this week.
Okay. And then in here, it says, "Prepare annual closure care report for 2023." The report will be completed in March of 2024. So is this work that's already been performed and we're going to be paying for it now?
I will follow up with them on that. I believe that's a typo.
Well, it looks like a cut and paste job. For a company that's been working with this city for twenty-five years and based on this billing, we've paid over one point five million dollars maybe or more, I would assume that we would be out of a cut and paste because this document, when I look at it, I mean, it says, "Based on these anticipated activities, we have developed the following summary table, which presents projected anticipated costs for these activities through 2023." I mean, it's just a... I mean, I'm not sure exactly when this proposal was produced or for what period, but it really requires to be revisited before I feel comfortable because it doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shamir. Any further discussions on this particular one? Okay, we'll move on then to advertise for bids for asphalt, concrete, and aggregates. Last year was the very first time that we actually went out to bid for these. This is in-house. This is what we use whenever our in-house team from the Public Works Department puts together solutions for our streets, parking lots, and other areas. And is there anything that you want to add, Mr. Lyskavec?
No, just looking to just kind of get ahead of the season. You know, the process went well for us last year. Obviously, comparatively pricing for what we're paying when I stepped in versus, you know, what we were paying on a per-unit cost was, had some savings to it.
And this is just to advertise to go out to bid? Any further discussion from my colleagues? Okay, we'll move on to the next one. This is also advertised to go out for bid for the Miller Road Park sand dredging project. We do this every single year. Because of the location that the Corps of Engineers told us we had to put that boat launch, we have to dredge it out every year so that the boats are safe coming in and out of port. Any discussions from my council people? Okay. Other business that we're going to be discussing. So in front of council is a proposed 2025 council meeting calendar. And the one date that you might want to look at in your attachment has to do with Easter. Easter's on April the twentieth. And what we have done in the past is not to meet the very next day, which in this year would be Monday. But the next week, we could have a double meeting, a CCM and a council meeting. And I need to hear from you, that's one option. Another option would be to have it on April the twenty-second and have it be a rescheduled meeting. The third option would be simply to forget it and not have one. And if we need to have one, we would have a special meeting. So I need to hear from council people. Yes, Mr. Cost?
Yeah, thank, excuse me, thank you, Madam President. As I said in the email that I responded to on this, I think the way that it is put before us with the double meeting on the twenty-seventh is it follows with what we've done in the past. And I support doing it that way. I know a lot of people travel, so having the Tuesday meeting, we might have difficulty getting a quorum here for council. And I don't like the idea of having a special meeting because I think it throws off the reading process as we're moving on. And we can't predict what we're going to have necessarily in April. So having that meeting on the books and ready to go, I think, is the way to go. No matter if it's a short meeting or a long meeting, doing it on the twenty-first and the twenty-seventh is my preference. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this particular topic? If I don't hear from you... Oh, yes, Mr. Shamir?
On the date, April twenty-seventh is a Sunday, if I'm not mistaken.
Let's pull it up again. Yes, you're right. So it'd be the twenty-eighth. Good catch. Especially with Easter being the twentieth, right?
I have an obligation, a business obligation during that period, so as I've mentioned previously.
Right. Anybody else want to mention if they're going to be able to be here? So we have a quorum. Do others believe we're going to have a quorum? I see no other discussion, so it must be by general consent saying yes. All right, we'll go forward with that. The next discuss, and this is going to be up for vote at the next meeting. Boards, commissions, and appointments. So as everybody knows, on our boards and our commissions, we really rely on the public to participate. And the mayorial positions are going, most of them are going to be going out for an advertisement to just remind the public that they're there. If they would like to participate, they can send in a resume or a letter of interest into the mayor's office. Oh, I'm sorry, to Valerie Ross Maron, Clerk of Council. With the council ones, we have heard from almost all of them. So at the next meeting, we are going to be able to provide placement. We haven't heard, let's see, there's one in here. We haven't heard from one gentleman from Community Relations Board that's a council appointment. We're still waiting to hear from him. Going through our list here. And there is one with the CIC we have not heard from. And so those wait then until later.
I did receive from that's Community Relations.
Oh, Community Relations, Sam?
Yes, he did contact me.
He did say yes?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Any questions on this? Yes, sir?
What did you, which one on the Community Relations Board? Did you hear from both of them or not?
Yes, from both of them. She just heard from him. I didn't have it on my list.
Okay.
Thank you. Right. Any questions from our council up here, members of council? All right. Then we'll move on then to third readings. So for the public certification, when you hear us say that there's going to be a suspension of the rule, that means that instead of having three readings, there would be one reading or two readings in order for this to move on because the business of council is to move the city through the process to continue the business of the city of Avon Lake. That is suspension of rule. When you hear emergency passage, emergency passage means if it should pass, it won't wait thirty days. It will go into effect right after the mayor signs. So we're ready now. So ordinance number twenty-four dash one-six-seven, these are third readings. Ordinance number twenty-four dash one-six-seven has to do with the ordinance fixing the salary of the members of council. Any comments from my colleagues? Okay, we'll move on to the next one. Ordinance number twenty-four-one-seven-one. This has to do with an ordinance to designate a portion of State Route eighty-three as a business district pursuant to codified ordinance section four oh two point oh seven and to modify the speed limit to be twenty-five miles per hour only within that portion of State Route eighty-three within the business district. Any questions about my colleagues? Okay, the next one would be ordinance number twenty-four dash one-seven-five. It's ordinance approving the plan of operation and governance for the NOPEC opt-in gas aggregation program.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't think you need to read the title of each piece of these legislation as we go down through them.
Okay, that's Mr. Zuber's opinion. Anybody else? The reason I'm reading them is that this is the end of the year. I want to make sure that the public understands the business that we're doing. Yes, sir?
Yeah, just, and again, I'm one person. I don't have a problem with the title being read. To somebody watching this at home or somebody that might be in the audience that doesn't have the agenda looking right at them, they're not hearing ordinance number twenty-four-one-sixty-seven means nothing to nobody.
Right.
So I like that you go through it very quickly. But I understand what Mr. Zuber's point is. But, you know, I look at it from the, how a resident may look at it. Hearing something for the first time, we're trying to follow along at home.
Anyone else?
I agree.
You agree, Mr. Shamir, with...
With what Mr. Cost said.
Okay. Ms. Gentry?
I agree.
With?
With Mr. Cost.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Hurdle?
Mr. Smith?
Okay. Majority rules. Okay, so we're going to continue here. The next one is ordinance number twenty-four dash one-seven-six. It's an ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to establish that opt-in natural gas program. Any comments, my colleagues? All right, we'll move on to the next one. Ordinance number twenty-four dash one-seven-seven. It's an ordinance amending codified ordinance section two oh eight point oh one entitled Fee Schedule that has to do with the worms and the ice. Take them out and to update the gazebo and the pavilion fees. Any comments? Okay, then we're going to move on to the second readings. Second readings, ordinance number twenty-four dash one-eight-three. It's an ordinance fixing a pay range for the position of Assistant Finance Director in the Finance Department. Any comments? We'll move on to the next one, twenty-four dash one-eight-four. It's an ordinance awarding a contract for the 2025 Fourth of July fireworks. Any comments, my colleagues? Okay. Ordinance number twenty-four dash one-eight-five. An ordinance awarding a contract for vehicle exhaust removal systems to Magna Grip. Any comments? Okay, we'll move on. Resolution, number twenty-four dash one-eight-eight. A resolution to adopt and declare a temporary budget for the year 2025. Comments? We're almost done. Ordinance number twenty-four dash one-nine-zero. An ordinance authorizing the creation of the sewer collection fund, number seven-two-two. Any comments? Okay. Next one, ordinance number twenty-four dash one-nine-one. An ordinance authorizing the creation of the water distribution fund, number seven-two-three. Any other comments, my colleagues? Okay, thank you very much for going through those. We're at the point in our agenda right now for public input. And I just want to remind everyone that we really do appreciate the public coming forward and having diversity of opinion. This is not a back-and-forth communication style, as you have noticed. It's actually a time when our community informs council of their thoughts and opinions. And this is the point where everyone has five minutes on any topic. And according to Robert's Rules of Order, the comments need to be addressed to the chair. This time is set aside, like I said, for public comment. And it does not mean that one can be verbally abusive. That's called slander. It's a form of violence. And verbal abuse to any of our employees or to the other members of council is going to be considered a form, like I said, of violence because it is actually trying to control and prevent public opinion. I have had residents come to me and say, "We would like to come to council to voice our opinions, but we are afraid that we're going to be the next target for the harsh language and possibly a lawsuit." Also, my colleagues may be feeling that they're prohibited in saying their freedom of speech. So with that all said, we do welcome public comment from anyone that would like to come forward. Thank you.
To Avon Lake residents and citizens, my name is Gerald W. Phillips. I reside at four sixty-one Windward Way. I'm an attorney for forty-seven years, a CPA for forty-eight years, and I've been before this body many times. I consider myself an activist. Twenty-plus years ago, I formed a group called Ohio Citizens for Honesty, Integrity, and Openness in Government. And during that twenty years, I've represented many citizen groups in northeast Ohio in connection with participating in government, instructing them how they can do petitions, initiative petitions, to put laws, to do referendums, to recall public officials, and to put charter amendments on the ballot. Recently, I was involved in the township with the Ross incinerator with the referendum. And recently, in Vermillion, I was involved with the charter amendment. Ohio citizens' main purpose is to make sure sunshine laws are enforced and public bodies comply with it. Also, they have public bodies comply with public records. My organization assists many groups in connection with that. And recently, we've been involved with the committee called the Brownfield Committee. And unfortunately, Ohio citizens, along with the taxpayer, filed a mandamus action in the Supreme Court on Thursday, December twelfth, because this committee, the Brownfield Committee, held at least sixteen meetings with no public meetings. None of those meetings were open to the public. They violated the sunshine law, one-twenty-one point two-two C, not having any public meetings. They violated ORC one forty-nine point four-three and not having any public meetings, even though they were requested. It was a last resort that we had to do that. You know, for anybody in the audience who wants to look up that case, it's twenty twenty-four dash one-seven-one-one in Ohio Supreme Court. You can read it in detail. In fact, I would like the public to read it. And if you're at home listening to this, tell your friends and neighbors. It'll be very enlightening to you. Mr. Zuber keeps asking about the White case. He can look at paragraph forty-three in the complaint and he can find out about the infamous White case about, you know, talking among council members in private meetings. Also, in the lawsuit, it indicates that the Avon Lake Community Development Corporation, which is the instrumentality of the city to do economic development and specifically the power plant, you know, violated their bylaws, section three point one-six concerning open public meetings. Also, they violated their bylaws, seven point four, that require them to keep meeting minutes of their proceedings. So in addition to violating the sunshine law, you know, how a public record statute, they also violated their own bylaws. Open meetings in public records are very important. And the rule in Ohio is that public records are the people's records, not the government records, but the people records. And that the officials in whose custody they happen to be are merely trustees for the people. They represent the people. Those records should be open to the public and not closed. Even our founding fathers, James Madison, clearly laid out his strength of our government when he said, "A popular government without public information or the means of acquiring it is but a prologue to a farce or a tragedy, or perhaps both. Knowledge will forever govern ignorance, and a people who mean to be their own governors must arm themselves with the power which knowledge gives." So what has happened is this Brownfield Committee has been operating in secrecy. They've been talking about the Avon Lake Power Plant, the economic development, and those discussions should be open to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for coming forward. Anybody else wish to speak tonight?
William Zimmerman. First thing I'd like to do is disagree with City Council President... First thing I'd like to do is disagree with City Council President. It says here that the courts have found the members of local governments must follow the rules of decorum, but members of the public are not bound by them. Plain and simple. Very easy. So I can do whatever I want, almost. It doesn't matter. All of you need to follow decorum. I do not. It also means that people like Mr. Cos doesn't get time to speak after I'm done to rebut what I've said so that he always gets the last word. That's not the function of the council either. The mayor, Zilka, Marty, all the people that have done that over the last years that I've been up here were doing it illegally. You weren't following the rules. So, now that we have that out of the way and clear, I agree with Mr. Phillips. This Brownfield Committee is a rogue committee, as I've said a hundred times. They've done things that just are imaginable to me. So according to Mr. Luca, he sent a letter to Sharah, who then responded. And this, in one of their meetings, I have minutes from the C I C meeting, not the Brownfield meeting, because there are no minutes from the Brownfield Committee, which is against the law, as Mr. Phillips has stated. That's why we filed suit against you. If your law director had any idea, he would have known that. Mr. Esborn, who does the minutes for the C I C, would have known that the Brownfield was a committee in illegal act. Mr. Esborn, I've several other issues with. We asked for an appraisal on a property at least a half a dozen times. He told me one didn't exist. Yet I met with Gary the other day and they went, they supposedly found one and now gave it to us. We knew it existed because it was in Todd Davis's files that, from all of his phone calls and the work that he does, which he overbills our city ridiculously. If anybody ever had a second to check it, you'll see that fifty thousand dollars for the month of October is a joke. He didn't do that much work. He doesn't deserve that much money. So anyhow, let's go back to the whole thing about Mr. Luca. So they start having a conversation. It says, Mr. Browse asked if Sharah cares about the grant money. Ted Esborn responded with, they do, but only if it can improve their bottom line. Andrew Perry then added that the city can unlock ten million dollars. Ten million dollars? How are we unlocking that? I want some. You won't even give me fifty grand for my committee. So are we helping their bottom line? Is there a deal behind the scenes to do that? Do we know? Does Mr. Esborn know? Because he's lied to me substantially more and more times as we, time has gone on. So Mr. Browse says the Brownfield Committee stands ready to meet with Sharah. This is in a meeting from February twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-two. After that,